Ready? Happy Monday, July 8th. Hope everybody had a good holiday weekend. We will get meetings started at 7:01 and we'll do a roll call. Sarah Lee Blair Fuller, absent. Roper shot Williams.
Here.
That's the tiny line. She, Christine, she's on. Yeah, she. Yeah. That's the one that's present. And Grandisillo.
Here.
Jay Borland.
Here.
Uh, Vice President Diane Ball.
Yes.
And President Bowe.
Here.
And we'll be the pledge of leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation. Thereupon, here it is all, for the greater good of. We will get started with public comments. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address, and you must be a Central Borough resident or taxpayer. And we will start in the room. Start to give here. Any? All right, and we'll go online. Please raise your virtual hand if you would like to speak. Kathleen, I'm allowed Kathleen to call. Okay. Kathleen, please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Kate Carrigan Hill. I live at fourteen forty-one Buella Road. And I don't know who to thank specifically, but thanks to anyone and thanks to anyone and everyone who had something to do with getting Buella Road taken care of. It was a big deal when the turning lane to Lewin Lane disappeared. It was a bigger deal when the uh, speed check went up. And to see what's happened since with the striping of Buella Road. To me, it has made a huge difference about being able to turn into my driveway and pull out. So, thank you to everyone. And I probably speak for most of Buella Road residents.
Thank you, I appreciate your comment. I think it was a lot of people, multiple people.
Whatever.
Lot of effort, so thank you. Any other comments, please? Raise your hand and we will promote you. Give me ten more seconds. And we will close public comments. Thank you all. And Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. I got a little bit quiet. I'm excited. I've been a precedence.
Yep. Motion to accept the meeting minutes from June 3rd, twenty twenty-four. Workshop meeting and regular council meeting held on June 10th, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion?
Before you, there, is there? There are special meeting minutes that were also in your packets?
Yeah.
So, we're ready that motion. Do you want to give your comfortable group minutes? You want to add that by adding special meeting?
Yes.
Anyone remember the date?
What was the date on the day?
It's in the back.
I remember it's the same. That's a special meeting for the. Thursday?
So, I only see the minutes from the workshop meeting and the regular council meeting. I didn't see minutes from the special meeting.
Yeah, they're in your packet and it wasn't June 20th.
Yeah, Thursday, June 20th. We good?
So, set the meeting minutes from June 3rd, twenty twenty-four. Workshop meeting and regular council meeting held on June 10th, twenty twenty-four, and a special meeting on June 20th.
Second. Any discussion? And our special meeting on June 20th, just as a public note, uh, was for the police officer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. And now, the mayor's report.
Chief Ron Ackley has reported to me that there were no significant incidents during the month of June twenty twenty-four. Our office handled a total of nine hundred thirty-three events, five thousand seven hundred forty for the year, consisting of both calls for service and product and patrol engagements and detail, resulting in three arrests. The total number of arrests for the year stands at twenty-six. The department's four police vehicles logged a total of four thousand eight hundred twenty-one miles. The combined year-to-date total is twenty-six thousand sixty-five miles. Car nine, I'm sorry, car number nine, two thousand thirteen Ford, of course, sedan, is still out of service. Ticket summary for the month of June 24th was twenty-nine zero non-traffic, fourteen parking, and fifteen traffic tickets. Following the following, following the recent installation and implementa- implementation of a new electronic speed sign located on Buella Road Southbound and on Greensburg Southbound. Chief has been able to review the data collected from each unit during the first month of use. Excuse me. The available data was selected from June 1st to June 30th, and it's quite extensive. He has shared some of the data. Greensburg Pike registered a total of one hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred vehicles that traveled with a daily average of four thousand five hundred thirty vehicles. The average speed was calculated to be thirty-nine point one mile per hour. More than thirty-eight percent of the motorists traveling between forty-one and fifty miles an hour, with four motorists traveling more than eighty miles an hour.
Woo!
The fastest speed was captured in eighty-six miles an hour. On Greensburg Pike. Buella Road registered a total of one hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred forty-three vehicles that traveled with a daily average of five thousand one hundred seventy-one vehicles. The average speed was calculated forty-one miles an hour. More than forty-eight percent of the motors were traveling between forty-one and fifty miles an hour. Twenty, I'm sorry, twenty most concerning, most concerning is that twenty motors were captured traveling in excess of eighty miles an hour. Six of those traveling faster than ninety miles an hour. The fastest speed was captured at ninety-nine miles per hour.
Oh, my gosh.
The data proved useful for many reasons, particularly when scheduling officers to conduct speed enforcement and aggressive driving detail. This information will give the chief the ability to target those days and times when department's efforts will be most effective. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of June of twenty twenty-four are reported on the attached police department reports. Those are some good statistics that the chief definitely can take all that stuff into consideration, like you said in the report, and when scheduling down there, find out when these people coming by. I think we did talk afterwards. Maybe an ambulance went by, traveling at a high rate speed. So, there's some variance there, like somebody might just want to see, like, can I get that to go to ninety-nine? You know? But still, either way, ninety-nine miles an hour, you know, thirty-five mile an hour zone. I think that'll get you a couple tickets.
They always.
Yeah.
It is a tough big concern, though. Yeah, we knew it was bad. We focused on the block, Buella and twenty-five block, Greenberg Pike. But if you consider what that speed looks like from your house to your driveway, from part of its vast twenty motors, at that speed is very concerning. That's your climb up here one a day. Forty-eight percent of motors are traveling forty-one and fifty miles an hour. That need to have itself, especially if you live there. Past speed is concerning, but it seems like no matter how mu- I mean, how much enforcement we do, we write a plethora of tickets there. We do most of our addresses, drive in details there, be my enforcement, and these are still the numbers coming in, so. If every, and I think we're certainly, you know, the speed limit, the signs, I've seen them. The spot, the signs also can tell you what their effectiveness rate is based on the initial speed of a vehicle captured and passing the sign.
I guess they slow down.
Right, so forty, it was about forty-nine percent reduction in speed after they saw the sign. So, I don't know if those numbers would look like if the sign wasn't there.
A lot higher than that. I was gonna say, those are probably a lot higher than that.
But, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and schedule all of our details accordingly and try to, you know, mitigate it as much as possible. So, the striping down there definitely helps. It's one in each direction now, but there's no ability to pass.
Great.
Hopefully collectively we will.
Thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you.
We're with that motion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Madam President, I vote for, I, I move to approve the mayor's report.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To our treasurer's report.
Madam President, motion to accept the treasurer's report on June 30th, twenty twenty-four, and director of finance officer to pay the bills to the borough of Churchill occurred since June 11th, twenty twenty-four. Non-payeral expenses, bill of $1,000.
Second.
As always, what we've always read the order bills. So, we have a bill for Gateway at thirty-three thousand eighty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Forest Hills for thirty-two thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Big Reali for twenty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. And the Meller Library for eighty-five hundred.
Any discussion, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can't include these. I'm moving on to our question item.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna play, I have you. All right. Madam President, I'm moved to appoint Nicolette Armstrong to the Churchill Recreation Board for the term ending December 31st, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for your interest and wanting to volunteer.
Thank you, Nicolette. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passed. Congratulations, Nicolette. Thank you for helping us out. Thank you.
Madam President, motion to approve Resolution four six zero five, appointing the Huntington National Bank as the official depository of the borough of Churchill.
Second. Any discussion?
I just agree, we really did a lot of due diligence here. We, we sat down with a bunch of mays. We really tried to find the great partner for the borough and where we can get the most out of it. And this was a great partnership, and I'm very much looking forward to it. I know Michelle and Ashley are as well, to moving our, our way here. So, I'm very excited about this.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Madam President, I'm moving to approve Resolution four six zero four, hiring Zachary Genoco as the patrol officer for the Churchill Borough Police Department.
There are seconds? Second. Any discussion?
I would only mention that I did, he completed all the, uh, contingency requirements, the drug screen, the physical exam, and the psychological. He's, he's good across the board, so I was in contact with him today, Friday.
Great, great. Awesome, thank you for the update. All in favor?
Aye.
I had a question before we move forward with voting. I'll just save it for the end. Thank you.
Okay. Opposed? And motion carries. Moving on to our next one. Second.
Uh, Madam President, motion to award the contract for the bullet pen stream restoration pollutant re- um, reduction plan, PRP to, to the lowest bidder, which is Hunt Valley Environmental, in the amount of ninety-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
There. Any discussion on that?
Can you talk about where the ninety-five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars is coming from? Is it grant-related? Provide more detail.
I, I can speak to the requirement of the project. Uh, this is for Blue Reduction Plan as part of your MS four permit requirement. These were originally required to be completed by March twenty twenty-three. Uh, but DEP did not have all the regulations out just yet, so they extended this. Uh, so this is a project that needs to be completed. It is intended to, um, perform stream bank restoration for about two hundred and fifty millennial feet of stream. Uh, we were able to work with the DEP, uh, to perform this work in one watershed. You are actually tributary to two separate waters yet, but this work was able to be in one watershed, which provides sufficient control on there. Um, and takes credit for, for both of those project require. Um, with that, uh, we have four bidders, uh, that, that had submitted Hunt Valley Environmental. We've gone up here, you've seen perform this work on a number of occasions, and we do believe that their, uh, that their price came in, um, uh, came in at an acceptable.
And should I answer the question about where the money is coming from?
Oh, I mean, this is coming from the sewer fund. Um, originally, it's, it's titled price of about sixty thousand dollars. Um, we're trying to move some funds around, but now it's sort of covered. The rest of it, we can tell it on a talk, we're not in budget meeting lately. This child, we can talk about.
So, there was a little bit of feedback. I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. You said that there was a budget of sixty thousand, and so you're looking to find or move funds around for the gap of thirty-five thousand. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And where do you anticipate the gap? Being, you know, coming from?
That's what we are talking of, going to talk about right now. Um, we're trying to operate clear of account. We're looking to also just trying to move some funds around, maybe general, it will be two. Um, yeah, we're just, we're literally discussing that, we're talking about them.
And at the same time, we are making more money and play it. And we're, we're trying to take the interest we're earning now, which we were not earning before, and budget that out, put it back into the account that we're taking a bump, so we should be okay.
Great. Thank you for mentioning that. If I know that's providing a little bit more.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
And motion carries. We will move on to our next one. You might be frozen. Did you freeze? I think she froze.
Madam, I'm sorry.
Oh, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you. You were frozen a little bit.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, Madam President. Motion to adopt ordinance number seven seven four, amending section fifty-four. I'm sorry, I'm reading this off of my iPhone. Of chapter two forty-six Sewers to exempt certain properties served by approved on-lot sewage facilities from sanitary sewer lateral testing requirements.
And there any discussion?
So, in the past, I have, you know, um, made it clear that I am opposed to amending this, um, ordinance and excluding on-lot sewage facilities. Um, one, because the EPA website notates that facilities on-site lock septic tanks are not maintained properly, do present risk to not only those who live on the property, but also the environment, um, as well as, you know, those who are surrounding that property that may have a, um, unmaintained on-lot sewage facility. I understand that the amended ordinance states that the Allegheny Health Department would need to provide a certificate showing that it is up to code. However, my current understanding is that the Allegheny County Health Department is not going to do regular inspection of that on-lot sewage facility. And so, I think it's important, if we're talking about preserving our community and ensuring safety, that we do not amend the ordinance and we do not exclude on-lot sewage facilities.
Any other discussion?
Unless the rest of the conference question.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
And the motion carries. And we have our discussion items back, and we start off with our engineer.
Uh, I don't believe that I have anything else from, um, uh, other than my report that was provided. I would bring up the plan to have a pre-construction meeting for both the PRP project at the end of this month and the paving project at the end of, end of this month, with the expectation that both may proceed in, uh, August.
Thank you. Ashley. Uh, Chief. Ralph.
Hey, yeah, the only thing I have, Madam President, is when Parkland had extremely busy months, ended up with fifty-nine calls per month. Now, we're at two hundred forty-five for the year. The only significant call that the Parkland responded to was we had a motorcycle accident upon Greensburg Pike, pretty significant accident in Greensburg Pike and Garbeteres. Uh, I would have that, it's just basic calls. Uh, believe it or not, since the Parkway has been worked on, uh, not really, really haven't been running up there as much as we've worked before.
That's great.
So, it seems to have slowed down a little bit of the Parkway. Uh, calls are definitely not so good, not for sure. Uh, under public works, I'm sure you see the guys out to be doing a lot of patchwork throughout the borough. We still have a lot more to do. Um, like, if we're talking about Buella Road, uh, starting tomorrow, we're gonna start painting basketball lines on Buella Road, Greensburg Pike, so that project can be started. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any committees want to say anything? The chief? I already asked the chief. Oh, I'll go second.
I just have a, just a public comment. I would like to thank Ralph, the volunteer fire department, and the police department for coming off from Blackridge, our annual Blackridge Bike Parade that we've had it for the last million years. And it's so nice, it's lovely to see the fire and the police there. It was a great event. I love firstly, thanks Seal, who's in the room, puts us together all the time. And works for, works for, we run off, do it. So, it was a great event. I just want to thank everybody who came, and it was so nice. So, thank you.
Any other committee?
Um, I'd just like to say that, um, you know, I thank Kate for, for coming tonight and the comments she did about Buella. Uh, Mayor and the chief and our staff have done, uh, just, it's been a struggle, you know, to get those signs, but what have they been worth? So, uh, I, I don't know, I, I can't be more grateful. And, uh, Chief, thank you for doing all the analysis of the data. I know it's extra, you know, but it's so valuable, you know, to the council, to the public. So, thank you.
And then one thing to that point, uh, folks, you know, government is slow. Right, like, these are things that they've been working on. Chief's been working on, Mayor's been working on, Council's been working on, not for weeks, not for months. I mean, honestly, for years, right? To get things like the signs, to get, get Jade, you know, Jade to kind of fund it, Jade, I mean, all these things. You know, so, I think there's, there's, people need to understand the amount of work that you all have put into this and the outcomes that come from it. And that it's not, you know, somebody showing up saying, hey, look at, I made a call, or I did this. Right, it, it is a lot of work that people have put in, a lot of time, a lot of staff time, a lot of volunteer time. Uh, so I appreciate y'all for the work you've done. And the outcome, you know, really benefits our residents. You're hearing it, both in what you're able to do, Chief, what you're able to show, what you're able to do with it. So, how many times have we heard the call from residents? Why can't I get another, why can't someone just have a car over there? Why can't, it's been going on, you know, five hundred, five thousand one hundred and eight days, right? I've been listening to that thing that, though I can tell you that I really appreciate the work that you're doing, and I think the residents need to understand how much work has really gone into this.
Thank you. Any other committee reports anybody wants to speak on?
I do have a question for the chief. Can you kind of give us some information about the new officer that we're bringing on? Um, I didn't see any information about his background, any years of service, et cetera.
I would say, and those sorts of personal questions to be executed session. We don't talk about that. We talk about specific employees, public. Perhaps, maybe you fall for the.
Ema.
Offline with the chief.
Yep.
So, we're not able to share any information about an officer that we just brought on to our police force?
We've not officially brought on yet.
I was asking a solicitor.
Yeah, so, the council did approve a resolution that, that it was essentially presenting an offer that must be counter signed by the, uh, patrol officer reporting suit's employment, uh, because it is a conditional, uh, offer. One, I understand from the chief that those conditions, uh, certainly have been satisfied, but it's still, uh, not consummated yet. So, that's what council did tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to our update. Um, Ashley, did you, uh, the, uh, E V multimodals are?
Yeah, that's anyone who's sort of.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. Um, borough was approached by, uh, Wilkins Township in regards to potentially performing a joint, uh, grant application for the multimodal, uh, grant. Those grants are due at the end of July. Um, that work would be for improvements, um, in Churchill along Buella Road, um, for the signals at, uh, both Buella, at Brady Buella, William Penn, kind of make sure that that intersection is kind of working cohesively, as well as, uh, at the intersection of Buella and Churchill Road. Uh, that's again, within Churchill. In Wilkins, it would be at, uh, uh, Roland Road and Brown Avenue. Uh, being that it would be a multi-municipal application, leaves that that, that could give a little bit more, uh, juice, a, a better chance that, uh, at that being accepted. Um, the initial, um, cost estimates, and this, this was just discussed last week and the thought that was put together last week. Uh, the initial estimates have a total cost around one point seven, uh, million dollars. Again, this involves all new mass arms, um, all new signals, as well as all new crosswalks and, uh, pedestrian signals. And pedestrian signals. And with that, the uh Churchill Borough share would be right around one point two based on that estimate. With the grant application, a resolution is required. That would be expected to be uh performed at the meeting in August. To verify with the uh D T E that they could, the resolution can be applied after the fact of the grant application. And within there, it just need to be indicated what the borough is uh comfortable with in terms of they match a percent matching. It was discussed potentially around five percent of the uh of the share of the one point two million dollars. Be about uh sixteen thousand dollars for the grant match from the from the borough. Wilkins would have a grant match as well. Uh Wilkins would also be approving a a resolution that would go along with this. As it would be a a joint uh grant application.
Great. Thank you. And our other discussion item.
And this this one, I guess I I can jump in, said to review the letter and talk to Michelle a little bit about it. Um the Westin uh twenty water authority. Is is seeking uh funding through Penn Vest, which is that a couple of those are a funding source. Um usually well, within the communities as well. They are seeking to replace uh the lead lined pipes for uh in this in this area. At no cost, at least no direct cost to residents. And they were careful to put that uh put. Uh so they were seeking essentially a seeking a letter of support or. Uh that just an expression by the borough that you support them getting free money to be very thankful for your residents, essentially.
Do we know which which funds those are? Do they know?
I don't believe it's been identified. I guess it's just really early to see what funds they can get.
All right, uh and then the next update is the. Budget meeting, the department has been, when you're actually do you want to talk a little bit about that?
So uh we started meeting with some departments and getting their requests and their ideas for twenty twenty five budget. So just waiting to hear back from other departments has with, you know, the updates and the vendors that they have. People are sending in increased amounts. Budget meetings and um.
Great, and I think it's important for residents to know that our staff are in conflict communication with a different department heads and committees there. Asking like, hey, what are your wants? What are your needs? We may not be able to cover everything financially, right? And so that deal is for maybe the upcoming year, but to start getting the ball rolling of what is necessary. And what is wanted versus what is needed for each department and having those conversations with staff so that they can plan for a budget. One thing I want to say, um I was pretty disappointed at the last meeting of the lack of communication of not having a forum. Uh we all communicate via team. That is how we let staff know uh anything. Um there are consultants that have to come from other parts of town, have to drive through traffic. And I feel like we failed them and we were not respectful of their time by not letting them know that we didn't have a forum. Until pretty late in the day. So I urge you all to please, please. Text your email and your team messages. If you are not able to attend, let staff know. If you are gonna be online, let staff know. Let me know. I texted several people and got no response. That is unacceptable. That is not teamwork and I'm very disappointed in those that did not respond. I will not call you out, but I know who you are. Sorry to end like that, but now we're gonna end up into something kind of bittersweet, so I and I'll give you the floor.
Uh I submitted a letter of resignation with counsel to uh our president over the weekend and um. For various reasons, I did not want to distribute that. So that's the opportunity to be good tonight so that everybody. Knows what it says and that the public knows what it says. So. It says, Dear Madam President, with this letter, I am submitting my resignation as Vice President. An elected member of the Churchill Borough Council effective at end of day Wednesday, July thirty first twenty twenty four. My tenure of ten years and seven months has provided me with many opportunities to serve, to learn, to mentor. To grow as a human being and to gain personally. By forming relationships with so many bright and truthful people who are passionate about public service. During the last decade, Churchill Borough Council has transformed in its philosophy of governance governance from conservative to liberal. From isolationist to active engagement with our own Churchill residents, neighboring municipalities, and many outside entities. This progressive approach has opened new possibilities in funding, building relationships at all levels of government. Technological advancements in all aspects of our operations and services. And professional staff development for the benefit of Churchill Borough citizens. I am proud to have served the borough and contributed to this evolution during my tenure. I have participated in a conscious effort to create a culture of mutual respect, speaking of. Uh honesty and trust among our council members during these years. We've succeeded in rising to weight challenges like the proposed natural gas fracking and the construction of a massive distribution center. With professionalism, mutual respect of our differing opinions, and a confident and united demeanor. The manner of our response to these challenges has been noted by outsiders' teams. And the borough currently enjoys the reputation of being a municipality of competence and reliability and operates with integrity. I am most proud of this achievement. I am most grateful to our manager, Michelle McAndrew, our assistant manager, finance officer, Ashley Brown. Our Public Services Director and Fire Chief Ralph Datlin, our property safety safety specialist, Scott Stonebreaker. Our Chief of Police, Ron Akerly, and our Mayor, Paul Manrick. These people are the reason why our citizens feel safe and valued and why they are indeed fortunate to live in the borough of Churchill. Sincerely yours, Daniel Law.
So don't you have a list?
I'm uh I will, my resignation is the same day as Diane. My Vice President for ever a day. I followed her out. She. Five thousand one hundred and eight days.
Yep.
That's the long that will have served. Uh told my wife I was forty when I started here.
I'm a baby.
But now, you know, there's there's nothing to say. I appreciate everybody. I hope by now anybody knows that. I will do whatever I can, whatever capacity I can for. I'm here for you.
I'm about to send you your three minute.
Put yourself on the agenda as a presenter and in the three minutes does not apply.
Sounds like someone who's.
Well, you have to you have to get the approval of of the Madam President here. So, you know, should I have a reason?
But for council members and the public too, I should, just to get through the mechanics in case folks aren't aware. As much as Mr. Moore is law, would like to exit the stage on July thirty first. Technically. They will not be exiting until council, majority of council lists to accept their resignation. So there will be certain level of identity privilege. Uh for at least. At least a few more days beyond that, but uh I think the sentiment is uh is understood. So. Uh council, at one of its August meetings, within forty five days of the presentation submitted, asked to uh whether to accept that, so it would be up to. Our council president on timing there, but if the council, if the resignation are accepted. At the second meeting in August, it's within forty five days. You must fill the vacancies within thirty days after they are created, so that would allow council a full meeting cycle. For both the workshop and the meeting in September. Um and just, there's no specific rules as to how these vacancies are filled, but when they are created, which they're not created yet. Um but they do need, they cannot be discussed by a forum um outside of a public meeting. And they uh there'll be a resolution, resolutions reached by this.
Perfect.
Pointed in the in the second business meeting in August.
I expect to refer to former President uh Jade Warren as uh our fearless leader. And there was a reason for that. So that says it all.
Thank you all. We will adjourn this meeting at seven forty one.
Moving to adjourn?